Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this December eighth, September eighth, two thousand twenty five. Could you tell I just ran in the door? Planning Commission meeting for Lower Mayfield Township. Thank you all for joining. Let's go ahead and do a roll call. So tonight, we have Mr. Bush.
Present.
Ginny.
President.
And me, Colin Coyle, present. That is a quorum. Those are the three members of the commission in attendance. Also attending, the town's engineer, the town's planning representative, and our solicitor. Okay. Next up is going to be the approval of the minutes from the July twentieth, two thousand twenty five meeting. We have the minutes this time, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yep, they are here. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
We approve the minutes from the July thirtieth.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Are there any comments on the minutes from the July thirtieth, two thousand twenty five Planning Commission meeting?
They were very well done.
Okay, they were very well done.
No.
Perfect. Any other comments on the minutes? Seeing none and hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the July thirtieth, two thousand twenty five Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record show that was unanimous vote. Item number three, discuss the tree replacement SALDO ordinance amendment.
Okay, yeah, so I'll do the first one, and then Jim can do the second one. Okay, so in front of you is, we are going to discuss the tree replacement SALDO ordinance amendment. This has been before the Planning Commission before, but it's just a small tweak to the numerical number. So the proposed ordinance has been provided to you. The township worked on this in tandem with the EAC. In layman's terms, the contribution by the developer for subdivisions to the tree bank will go from three hundred and seventy-four dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars per replacement tree. That was a number that the EAC thought made more sense. And then, there is also some nomenclature that is just getting tweaked. If you refer to one seventy-eight dash eighty-five H four DT, it says annually, the contribution per replacement tree will be adjusted to reflect the annual change in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, CPIU, for the twelve-month period ending each October as reported by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. We are going to add wordage where it is now specific for the Philadelphia Camden Wilmington area. We thought that just made a little bit more sense to add that specifically, just for the Philadelphia Camden Wilmington, because it kind of goes in line with, you know, just best trends, I guess.
Well, I think one of our other fees that we have is tied to the index for Philadelphia Camden Wilmington. So this will match up. That way, we don't have to look up two separate indices to try to come up with what the inflation rate is for the purpose of establishing fees that are adjusted annually. And this also adjusted annually, too, I believe. I think before it was on a every-three-year basis.
Yes.
You would adjust it. But instead, since we do other fees annually, the modification would be to do it annually at the rate, that's the going price for what a tree costs, which has been confirmed by recent bids that we've done for tree planting.
Yep, yeah, by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics rounded up to the nearest whole dollar.
Done, Dan? All right, okay, questions from the board?
So the obvious question is, what happens if tree prices go up a lot, not, not just inflation?
I, I think this was in response to that. I think that's what, when we, when we did a lot of the tree bids.
But, but, but I'm talking about, there's no inflation, and, and all of a sudden, there's, there's four years of drought in a row, and tree prices skyrocket.
We'd have to.
Amen.
What we're doing now.
Yeah.
We initially established it, the price seemed like a fair price.
Mm-hmm.
But inflation has outstripped it, so we've come up with a number that accounts for the tree, plus the cost for deer protection fencing, plus the cost for the gator bags so that we could fill it, so that they're more likely to survive through a drought.
No, no, I'm, I, and that's all good.
And should that not be sufficient?
Right.
Five years from now, we'll be back in front of the Planning Commission.
Might have to. I mean, all I'm saying is, this may not resolve it, because tree prices may be unrelated to inflation. They may, they may go up at a much faster rate.
Yeah, and that, and that could be another reason why we would do this again, and just increase the number.
Increase.
The per replacement tree, just increase the number.
Okay. Yeah, I think we saw we're, like, lagging fifty dollars behind what the current value is.
Yeah.
With that three seventy-four adjusted for the inflation would have taken us to.
So, the reference to inflation is really, functionally, an instruction to staff for what to recommend to the board for the amount, right? Because the board still has to memorialize any change, correct?
Yes, this will be memorialized in our subdivision land development ordinance. So it's there for every developer to look at, and it talks about, it's adjusted for inflation, so they could go to our fee schedule, which we update now yearly, and that will have in that what the adjusted number is for inflation. So every year, we put in what the current value is.
Right.
Okay.
So, but this language limits it to being tied to the Consumer Price Index.
That is correct.
Would it not be more sensible to save the time in attorney's fees, not having to come back and modify SALDO in a given year where there's a strange event, and just say that annually, the contribution per replacement tree will be adjusted by no less than the Consumer Price Index for this particular region?
I don't know if legally you can do that. That's just sort of saying, we're arbitrarily going to pick a number. It needs to be based on something.
Does it?
I think so.
I mean, it's our, it's our tree bank, right?
Yeah, I, I just think this gives a little bit more direction and, I, I guess, structure to the developers. Not that we're always trying to accommodate them, but in this case, just so that they have something to rely upon. And you're absolutely correct. You know, the cost of landscaping trees, shrubs, et cetera, could absolutely outpace inflation. And I would suggest that we would probably do, as Jim just stated, that we'd probably have to be back before you again. The good news is, this was not heavy lifting for part of attorneys, so the attorney's fees were, were relatively minor on this one. But I, I believe that, you know, just to have it a amorphous figure or dollar amount, or just as a baseline, which I guess is really what we're suggesting, is, does not give enough structure or definition to the developer.
Okay.
So along with this, maybe, maybe there's some sort of recommendation that, like, that, because these things easily fall through the cracks, or they can, you know? People, people change jobs, people lose sight of things, just their focus changes, and somehow, we need to make sure that this kind of doesn't fall through the cracks in year three or year four after, after it gets modified. I'm not sure what the best mechanism for that to occur would be, but there should be one. Substantively, I do see here that we've added some things. We've talked about native ground covers and grasses. This is a tree bank, and I'm sure this came from the EAC, but I'd like to hear the rationale for it.
Well, I think the rationale is that whenever you cut down trees within a wooded area, you're disturbing the ecosystem. Part of that ecosystem is the understory shrubs and ground cover. And by saying that, when you cut down trees, you can replace it with a combination of trees and shrubs and ground cover can have the effect of replicating sort of the existing wooded ecosystem.
So how do we ensure that somebody doesn't come in and try and avoid trees and go way too heavy on ground cover, or something, or the, or the reverse?
Sorry, if, if I may, the, the township uses the tree bank funds.
Right.
So it's just authorizing the township.
That's true. I'm sorry, you're right.
To make alternative planting. Ginny, I think.
You know, I'm glad you just said that, because I forgot about that, too.
You're a hundred percent right. I'm sorry about that.
I am broadly supportive of increasing the town's flexibility to replace the plantings. Ginny, you look like you had a question?
Uh, yes, I did, but it's, it's escaping me now. I was going to ask, what do we do if there's no employees left at the BLS? But that's for another discussion. I, I did, I've been peppering Jim with questions before the meeting, and I just wanted to satisfy myself that the current situation is that developers have to put in native, native tran, native trees and shrubs, that this is not a change from something previous.
Correct. All trees are required to be native. For the second one that we'll talk about, the basis of that was an ordinance that had been promulgated back in two thousand twenty-one, beginning of two thousand twenty-two, where a few supervisors wanted to have the allowance for non-native trees. That went through the EAC, who recommended approval of that second ordinance that we'll be discussing, except that they did not want any non-native trees to be allowed. Our Planning Commission went through the ordinance the same way, and had the same feeling that they were okay with the, the second ordinance we're doing, except for the allowance for non-natives. Ultimately, when it went to the Board of Supervisors, with that recommendation, the board ultimately just tabled it, because they couldn't come to consensus, I believe it was tabled, as to whether or not there should be non-natives or no non-natives. So it just dropped, and now we're picking it up again from a couple of years ago. So everything will be native, there's no change in that.
Well, there, there is a change, because the, the current text, as it stands, just says shall, sorry, these funds shall be used for the purpose of planting replacement trees. So there's no specification of native. What we're reviewing before us today specifies instead, the funds shall be used for the purpose of purchasing and planting native trees, native shrubs, native herbaceous perennials, and native ground covers.
So that. There you go, we made it even clearer.
Right, so that is a change. We are, in fact, now codifying in the ordinance that they must be native plantings.
Good eye.
I think the only other question I had, again, was related to the function, the functional method of increasing the, the dollar amount to the tree bank. So it says that it will be adjusted to reflect the annual change in the CPI, and it'll be memorialized by the board, right? Do, is that a necessary function? I mean, in a given year, where perhaps, in the chaos of budgeting, that one line item gets missed by staff, are we now not able to take advantage of, you know, CPI adjustments? Is it necessary for the board to memorialize that change?
Um, no. What I was going to say as a follow-up to that was, I would suggest that this be diaried, at least on a.
Sorry, Maureen, I think your mic's off.
Sorry. I would suggest that, as a follow-up to the earlier comment, that this be diaried for at least every two-year review. So I don't know if it has to be reviewed every year, but at least every, every other year, to make sure that it is consistent with inflation, et cetera. Does it prohibit us from making sort of a mid-year change? No, I don't believe so. I think that we would be able to do that.
And it should be noted that, years ago, we just used to revise our fee schedules, sort of, once someone said, hey, let's raise one fee, hey, let's raise another fee. And I, I remember when I started, I looked at some of the fees and said, these seem low. And it turns out that many of the building inspection fees, many of the other fees, hadn't been raised in over twenty years. So people were proud of that, but we're losing a lot of revenue that would cover the cost of running a department.
And then we have to do catch-up fee increases, which are like a shock to the wallet of, of the folks of the township, so.
And we did look at not only raising fees, which many of them were raised, many of them were still good, because they were tied to the cost of construction, but we also lowered and eliminated some fees that were either a little overboard and discouraged people from getting permits, or that were no longer necessary or required by the state or by the locality.
To Maureen's point about diarying it, I could make, this is just an idea, I'm spitballing. I could maybe put a comment in the annual report, like, when we talk about the specific thing that we discussed, just put, like, to be reviewed again in one to two years, with, like, an asterisk. I don't know if that's.
Well, we review it every year before the fee schedule, so we know which ones are tied to.
Right, right.
Indices, like our tree replacement, it went up from three seventy-four to three ninety-six, based on the adjustment for inflation. But that's where we said it'll still probably fifty dollars low. Inflation had outpaced it. And keeping track of, wait, are we on year two, year three, or did we miss year, year four? I think the EAC saw us being problematic, and so did we, because we, like I said, we now do it every year. Why don't we make it every year, so it's just easier to review the entire fee structure, to see if anything needs to be raised, lowered, eliminated, or added?
So, the, you use the example of, maybe, did we lose track, are we year two or year three? So that's my other question about the construction of the text. If we miss adjusting it one year, and we want to adjust it the next year, does the text allow us to look at inflation from the date that the ordinance was adopted to the date that the adjustment's being made? Or does it only reference rate over the prior year, right? So, you, you see what I'm trying to get at here, Maureen?
I do. I, I would say, number one, I would, I would argue that if you miss it one year, it's not a waiver. Therefore, you would have the ability to do, just as you stated, look at maybe the, the two-year differential. So it's to be adjusted to reflect the annual change in the Consumer Price Index. So you're using the then-current. So if you missed a year, and then you could use the then-current CPI for this particular area.
And this actually happened years ago, back when I was the township engineer. I was looking at the fees one time for, I think it was a park and rec fee, no, it was traffic impact fee.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's the other one. And I noticed, like, the numbers seemed to be low. And I looked at it, and one year, the fee went down, I think, it went down instead of up. So they subtracted instead of adding. So then I had to make up a spreadsheet to say, what if we carried through the cost increase the way it should have been, what were the fees were? And then we finally did a catch-up in that one year to be the, what the fee should have been if we had calculated it correctly.
So then my follow-up question, then I think I'm done with questions, at least for now. What happens, so, sorry, so the, the text here says, annually, the contribution per replacement fee will be adjusted to reflect the annual change in the CPI. What if, for whatever reason, and kind of borrowing a point that Ginny was making earlier, the CPI goes downward, right? There's a deflationary action on it. And we look at that, and we say, we don't agree with that deflationary number, right? Do we have to lower it? Should we replace will with may?
Though will is not shall in this instance either, so.
Yeah.
There is a little bit of latitude with the word will. You could certainly replace the word will with may.
I mean, if nothing.
To accommodate for.
Gives us a small amount of latitude.
Yeah.
Although legally, to be fair, I mean, if the cost goes down, theoretically, the cost goes down. And, you know, long-term, they always go up.
Well, the CPI going down does not mean the cost has gone down. It means a broad cross-section of goods that are for sale within the geographic area of Philadelphia and Camden have gone down, right? To Tony's point earlier, that may be eggs, that may be, you know, waffles and cars and everything else, but it may not be trees and gator bags and everything else, right? I mean.
Unfortunately, there's not an index for.
There's not.
For trees.
So I'm just saying, may gives us a little bit of, listen, nobody's, I doubt we're going to see a lawsuit over, you guys said four fifty, the CPI went down a couple of points, it should be four forty-seven, twenty-three. This might be a useless change, I'm just having the conversation while we're here.
I'm just wondering, is there any value, instead of the word memorialize, that you use the word adjust? I mean, memorialize, to me, connotates, there's a number, and that's it, you just memorialize it. But if you say, what I'm trying to come up with is, is some kind of thing that would give the board a little, if we did have a situation like that, or a situation where, you know, because of imports, tariff, whatever, the price of trees, shrubs, whatever, went up a tremendous amount in a particular year, that there could, the board, if they wanted to, they could make an adjustment, you know, sort of a one-time adjustment.
I don't think that's something you could easily do. You, you, you set a number, and you have to go with it, or, I don't know how you could, I mean, otherwise, you'd have to, every single year, you'd have to revise SALDO to have a number. And to do that, then you have attorney's fees, the Planning Commission, it, it's just sort of chasing your tail for what gain, I'm not sure.
Jim, what's the average amount of time between establishing, telling a developer what the fee's going to be, and them actually developing something and purchasing the trees for planting, or purchasing, not even necessarily purchasing, but putting money into the tree bank fund?
Usually, we do it at the time of preliminary approval. As we say, that is your trigger, this the amount set. And for them to go to construction is anywhere from a couple of months to sometimes a couple of years, if there's sewer moratoriums and stuff like that.
So, I think we may, and by we, I mean I, be well overcomplicating the text that's in front of us. I just wanted to double-check with the solicitor. If you're comfortable with will, let's leave it with will. If you think it should be a may, you know, we could throw in a may, but otherwise, I don't think.
Will and may are the same.
Will and may are the same thing.
Same thing, it's not shall.
All right, will and may are not shall.
Exactly. Maybe to sort of split the baby, you say, will, shall, or will be no less than four hundred fifty dollars per replacement tree, then you are accommodating for a downward decrease in CPI, so at this point.
It could never go below four hundred fifty.
Will never go below four hundred fifty dollars.
I think that's a very positive change here.
So you could be no less than.
Yeah.
And then, to address Ginny's concern, I think the last sentence really is, sort of incorporates all of the conversation, in the sense that the amount of the tree bank contribution shall be memorialized by the approval of a resolution by the Board of Supervisors, intimating that maybe by resolution, you can simply increase this dollar amount in the future, as opposed to going for, going through this once again.
So the only change you're recommending is the no less than? And you're interpreting the resolution as saying, any resolution could override this?
I would suggest that that's absolutely a possibility.
Okay.
Or we could do just what we're doing, again, you know, two or three years from now.
Yeah.
But I, I would just like to also add that having a, a dollar certain, I think, is important. Jim and I just had a disagreement with a developer over a fee that was not necessarily specified in a dollar amount.
Right.
And it took time on behalf of the township to go back and look at what was an average or fair price, and then that was contradicted by the developer. So to have a fee certain really will save attorney's fees at the end of the day.
Good. Tony, any further questions or comments?
Comment. Related issue, but I think it's timely and relevant to this, is, I think the Lower Mayfield should do some public education about where and how tree bank funds are expended, both positively and negatively. I think positively, you know, you recently, I'm thinking in the spring, there were a bunch of trees planted on, around Oxford Valley Road in Edgewood, where they come together, looks nice, it just sort of appeared, there wasn't much presented publicly, the town, people don't really, you know, it should, there should be some promotion of that. This is where these trees are going, this is where the money comes from, things of that sort of thing would be positive for the town. Likewise, I think there was a recent negative development, it's been addressed, but wearing a different hat, I happen to sit on the Bucks County Free Library Board, and there were six or seven trees taken down in front of the library building, right on the property line, and they were, they're township trees, they were mature, but they were non-native. And probably been there, certainly been there as long as I've lived in the town, which is nineteen ninety-five, and they were there before that, I'm sure. And there were a lot of people that came into the library very upset, thought the library had taken the trees down, and no, it was the town, and it was explained that they were, the township manager gave a good explanation for the library to use, that it was, they were non-native plants. But there's still a lot of people that wonder why we're taking down what appear to be healthy plants to put up other plant, other trees. I think there should be some public education about that. And if the town's going to do that, then it should let people know what it's doing and why it's doing it.
Yeah, so to your point, Tony, the plants that were taken down were the, the calorie pears, which are on the Pennsylvania Noxious Weed List? That's why they were, they're not just non-native, they're noxious weeds.
No, I.
And it had been announced at several Board of Supervisors meetings previously. We didn't specifically reach out to the library and say, hey, there's going to be.
I'm not talking about the library, I'm talking about the public at large, public at large. You know, we send out a newsletter four times a year, there could be something in there about, this is what we're doing and why we're doing it. I mean.
To, to your point, I, the plan was originally to take them down in the fall. They kind of surprised us that they took them down early. They kind of surprised us that they took them down early. So that was part of the outreach was, that was planned, to your point, all to your point. They came down a little prematurely because they had a, an opportunity to do it.
They were to be felled in the fall?
What's that?
They were to be felled in the fall?
Felled in the fall and replanted at the same time, so you wouldn't have a lot of time of bareness, let's say.
But I'm not just talking about negative things, I'm talking about positive things, you know, where there's trees going in, where there weren't trees, that there should be some announcement about that. And I'm not sure if there was or wasn't, but I don't think too many people knew about it.
Yeah. So just to that point, we just approved our fall 2025 planting plan at the last Board of Supervisors meeting. So there will be many, many trees going up in the township this fall.
Great.
And just like our spring planting, it'll be posted on, problem is, we don't have a lot of folks that actually pay attention to township business, unfortunately, sometimes.
Well, there are many fans of the planning commission, I assure you.
I'm sure, obviously.
For those many fans, I will also say that there was some planting down on Mira Lake Road this year to help stop erosion and run off onto that section of roads.
So I would encourage everyone, all of us that are, you know, township representatives in some way, shape, or form, to help spread the word, because we have been trying to put it on township websites, social media.
Are there, is there any way?
The planting plan was in one of the announcements, but we're going to start moving the, sort of an aside, you mentioned the newsletter, we're going to start making sure that's electronic and not hard copy everywhere for multiple reasons, which hopefully will get better readership too, as we move forward.
Is there any way that temporary signs could be put up when these, you know, not when one or two trees are put in, but, you know, an extensive amount of trees, some kind of temporary sign that you say?
Yeah, like one of those, your tax dollars, you know, like DOT does, your Penn dollars at work.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be ugly, but.
Yeah, no, I know. I think that's a great, and we can save them and move them around as we do more plantings.
I was, I was, Ginny, like, I love that you suggested that. I was, in fact, going to recommend, while we have this matter open, does it make sense to suggest that one of the permitted uses of Tree Bank funds is for promotion of the use of the Tree Bank and communications around the use of the Tree Bank? Or do you feel there's enough funding in the general fund to cover a sign?
For that type of thing, I think there's plenty of, as much as possible, I would, personal opinion, focus the Tree Bank, and probably legal to some extent, focus as much Tree Bank funds on trees.
Right.
Tree, and which, I don't know if you've talked, if you've talked about the shrubs and native grasses yet, I would highly recommend not using Tree Bank funds for grass, for herbaceous vegetation.
Because we did talk about that prior to your.
I figured as much. Yeah, no.
And what's, what's your thought about it?
So, little background, this is my academic background, as well as my professional background. I've done habitat mitigation for literally tens of thousands of acres of different types of habitat. And one of the principles we have when we do mitigation, which essentially a Tree Bank is, is to replace in-kind functions and values, that's a term we use a lot in the business, so to speak, of replacing in-kind functions and values. So, for example, when a forest wetland is impacted, right, so you're taking down trees. And you might be keeping it a wetland, but you're changing it to a scrub shrub wetland, so mostly shrubs, or a herbaceous wetland, which is herbaceous grasses and whatnot, but still wetland species, that's considered an impact by the state and federal government because you're changing the functions and values of that, of that particular habitat, to an extent that it's no longer the same habitat. That's something you have to get a permit for. So they, and they don't allow you to mitigate for that using something other than trees. It's just because you're, if you think about how long it takes a tree to grow and establish that habitat, it's very different, not only in terms of cover type, but it's very different in terms of the function and value, ecosystem function and value that it services, it provides between a forest area, a scrub shrub area, and a herbaceous area. So I know when this comes before the board, I will not be, there are certain aspects of everything we just talked about relative to the funds, 100% in favor of, love the language you guys picked, to make it even better. But when it comes to allowing for Tree Bank funds to replace, to be used for herbaceous vegetation, I can't support that as a scientist that does this. The other issue is practically speaking, when you actually plant something like this, right? You plant a tree, you know you're getting a tree, it gets to be a certain size over time, you can see that individual tree, right? When you're doing herbaceous vegetation, you're often doing seed mixes and whatnot, it might be good for a couple of years, but the nature of doing a, an herbaceous mitigation site is that the area gets, is disturbed and you're trying to establish something new, right? Within two, maybe three years, all that stuff you planted, if you, you know, if you're not actively managing it, will ultimately become non-native species. They will come in and take over, and you'll have a completely different landscape than what you planted, which won't be trees, it'll be something else you don't want. So been through that way too many times, and I just, I don't think it would be a positive. I appreciate the flexibility that this is trying to show, but in practice, it just doesn't provide the same benefit.
I think the, the text here is not related to what a developer can do on a site when they remove a tree, it's giving the town the authority to choose what they want to plant, right? To your point about disturbing one habitat and changing it, it's really saying the town, the town government has the leeway to go, okay, this other site that we want to rehabilitate. And you're saying that in that site, you would never want to plant anything other than a tree by ordinance?
I, yes, if we're using a Tree Bank fund to do it, I would, it'll, it'll have to be actively managed for years and years and years, which we, the township does not have the staff to do that. And it would not provide in-kind mitigation, in-kind benefit to what had been impacted and the, and the whole point of, of replacing trees.
Okay.
That's.
I mean, is it worth it for us to consider striking that language here? I mean, I mean, I don't, to be frank, I don't know enough about the issue to say, if a tree is cut down on the southern end of the township, that it is, that the, you know, the town shouldn't have the latitude to plant a different mix of things in the northern end of the township to rehabilitate a habitat there with those, with those monies if that's the best use of Tree Bank money?
I'm just saying, in my professional experience, they don't, they don't match.
Right.
I, like you, don't have the experience to weigh in on that, other than when I first read this, it did jump out at me that we were talking about using Tree Bank funds for things other than trees. And that's why I asked it earlier, but maybe if we're going to recommend approval of this language, that we stress that this issue needs to be fleshed out by the supervisors, that, you know, we don't have the expertise here and we're hearing conflicting information, some of which, you know, Dan's talking from his experiences, which would suggest that this is a bad idea.
Right.
So it may require further reflection by the board.
Okay.
Consideration by the board.
So if there's, let me, let me form this in the shape of a motion, and we'll see if we get a second on that and we can go forward. So I'm going to move that we approve the, the changes to the tree replacement SADO ordinance amendment as presented before us tonight, with the change that the text specifying the contribution by the developer to the Tree Bank will be $450 per replacement tree, be amended to read, will be no less than $450 per replacement tree. And that, given that the language allowing the township to use Tree Bank funds more broadly than for the planting of trees themselves, appears to be contentious with experts, that the board carefully consider the experience and input of experts before deciding whether or not to adopt the language as it stands. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? Breaks my heart. Maureen?
To amend your motion if possible?
Please.
Not that I have, that I can really do that, but to, I guess alleviate some of the concerns of earlier conversation, the last line states any increase in the amount of Tree Bank contribution.
Maureen, I'm sorry, you appear not to be on microphone.
Yes. The last line that begins with any increase in the amount of Tree Bank contribution shall be memorialized by the approval of a resolution by the Board of Supervisors? What if we insert the word future, so any future increase in the amount of the Tree Bank contribution shall be memorialized by the approval of a resolution of the Board of Supervisors? So maybe that will alleviate coming back before this committee and before the board for any, really, in essence, a nominal increase in the 400, right now, $450 per replacement tree?
And I, I'm sorry, I, I thought that the language is written, worked that way.
I think this just solidifies the language.
Okay. So I, should I just withdraw my motion and then re-present the motion? Okay, Tony's going to make a motion to amend the.
I'll just make a motion to amend your motion as articulated by Maureen.
I will second the motion to amend my motion.
And I know you're, Jim, I know you were getting into this a little bit earlier, but every year during budget season, we have a whole slew of fees that we update, right? A lot of them, parking rec fees, other permit fees, et cetera. Why don't we just wrap it into that somehow? Is that easier?
Well, I think that was the purpose of saying memorialize it by the Board of Supervisors. The annually adopted and updated fee schedule is the memorialization of this fee with the increase.
Yeah, we're not specifying it has to be its own separate resolution, it just says a resolution by the Board of Supervisors.
Right.
Yeah. I don't want too many resolutions.
Yeah, we actually used to do separate resolutions, one for the fee schedule, one for the parking rec fee in lieu of, one for the traffic impact fee in lieu of, and then one for the Tree Bank fee in lieu of, and then.
Sidewalk fee in lieu of as well?
I think Dave Kratzler said, why don't we just wrap that up into one? I'm like, that'd be fantastic.
So procedurally, we have to vote on the motion to amend the motion, and then we vote on the underlying motion, which now stands amended, is that correct? Okay, so all in favor of the motion to amend the original motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record show that it is unanimously amended. Is there any further comment on the original and underlying motion? Wonderful. I will call the question, all those in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, like the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you very much. I look forward to the board enjoying the new tree ordinance amendment. The next item on our agenda is to discuss the ordinance to amend provisions of SADO, Chapter 178, Article 11, landscape and open land requirements. Dan?
I'll take this one. This is a, an oldie but a goodie. Back in 2021, we started looking at amending our landscape ordinance for sizes of trees. At the time, we were finding that a lot of developers were having troubles getting three-inch caliper trees. So looking at what other towns used and what some other landscape architects had recommended, recommended lowering that minimum size of tree to be planted for street trees, like the two to two-and-a-half inch caliper, and the height of other evergreen trees from six feet, five feet. And, and we also had gone over with farmland preservation, the issue they have with their buffer. As currently written, the type three buffer, which is the farmland buffer adjacent to, whenever you do a farmland subdivision, we really only have probably one other potential for that. However, if that does happen, it would have required a 25-foot buffer that's planted with trees on the farmland property. And farmlands started to find out that they were spending a lot of their funds maintaining the trees that were within that buffer. So we looked at that and said, why don't we make the buffer a 35-foot buffer and have the planted part of the buffer be on the property owner's side? And that way, the property owner would maintain their trees, it would impact farmland less. At the time, the ordinance had gone through the EAC, it had gone through the planning commission, and it had gone through the Board of Supervisors. The EAC and the planning commission objected to the, the provision at that time, which was to have a certain percentage of trees be non-native. So the EAC objected to that. The planning commission recommend approval of the ordinance that you see in front of you, except deleting the provision for non-native trees. And the Board of Supervisors, I don't believe they ever came to a consensus on it, but I think it just died and was tabled. So now we're back in front of you with the amendment that had been recommended by the EAC, by the planning commission. And I think the Board of Supervisors was pretty much in favor of it. The, the sticking point was that non-native issue, which we've pulled out completely from this ordinance. Every tree that will be planted will be native.
And from a board perspective, I think I agree with you, Jim. In terms of allowing for different sizes, just as someone who, getting back to what we were just talking about, buys a lot of trees and has to identify where to buy a lot of trees, bigger trees like that, one, are somewhat difficult to find, depending on the nursery, and two, this may be counterintuitive, but sometimes the bigger the tree you plant, the less likely it is to survive. So we often, when we're trying to get trees established, we also often do look for slightly smaller trees, depending on species and whatnot. So allowing for some flexibility there can actually provide for more success when planting trees. Relative to the 10% issue, I could fairly safely say that this board, this current board, which has different membership than prior, would be pretty strongly opposed to allowing for any non-native trees to be, to be planted as part of it, under an ordinance.
And that's been completely stricken from this draft of the ordinance.
Appreciate it. Little bit of background there from board perspective.
Couple of questions. So how far in advance does the town place orders for trees from the Tree Bank?
Not too far in advance. As a matter of fact, I think the plant, the ones we do are two-inch caliper trees. And so they, and even then, since we don't give ourselves enough leeway sometimes, we have to do substitutions of what we had hoped to get, and then they have to be approved. And, and the reason why we try to have a mix of trees is that you don't want to have some blight come through, wipe out because you used all.
Yeah, sure.
All red maples everywhere, when you could have mixed in other trees. But at the end of the day, like, you know, there's certain species that every nursery carries a lot of them, and they're more readily available. In a perfect world, we'll do this earlier next time, we say it every year, but we'll do that earlier next time so that contractors and bidders have the option of getting more of a variety of trees.
To your point, so last, last Board of Supervisors meeting, we, what's last meeting, right? We voted to put out the RFP to buy trees as part of the fall, this fall's tree planting plan, which will be done very soon.
Right.
As you can, so like Jim said, it's a little tighter window than maybe we would have liked, but at the same time, nurseries have, we give the, and this is typical of private sector too, we have a planting list of natives that are usually based on what is typically available, to your point. Sometimes you try to throw in some different stuff to get some variety, but at the time of purchase, you are kind of at the nursery, the mercy.
The mercy of the nursery.
Yeah, that's funny, I didn't plan that, but it's.
Felled in the fall with the mercy of the nursery.
So you, you have to be, you have to be a little bit flexible to make the proper adjustments, make sure they're native, all that stuff. And then you, you purchase them, they deliver them, and you get them out there, so.
I know, like, fall is the best time to plant, and I go to buy a tree in the fall, and they say, you should have placed an order in the spring, because it's only scraggly ones that are left. This is probably outside the scope of this. I mean, it may make sense for us to try and look at a way to place our tree order well in advance, if we do want three-inch trees, and the developers would have some mechanism to say, well, our Tree Bank has an order for some three-inchers, you can, you can take delivery of those instead, but.
And I don't, typically, we wouldn't do a three-inch caliper tree unless, maybe there's a grove of trees that were all large and you wanted that more immediate impact, didn't want to have the one dwarf tree in the middle of giants.
So the other question I had was related to the buffer, and this came up as we were walking through Wright Farm back in last fall, right? My concern is, and I get that farmland, by putting the buffer and the tree responsibility over on the residential side, like, that tree's not under farmland preservation's control. So if, if someone owns a large amount of land and they decide to cut the trees down, now we've got to start suing homeowners to get them to replant trees, or we're planting them back in the farmland area anyways? I mean, I worry about the buffer respons- I mean, I worry about the buffer responsibility being taken off of land controlled by farmland preservation and scattered across land under other ownership.
Understood, but it is sort of an issue, even like, street trees. There's nothing, we don't have a shade tree commission, to say that you can't take down a buffer tree. And like I always say, the farmland buffer was intended to be for the benefit of the homeowner, not necessarily for farmland. And so, we plant the trees on the homeowner's side so that, you know, they're shielded a little bit from winds that may blow the cropped fields, you know, after they're plowed, stirring up dust, stuff like that. And if they choose that they'd rather have the view of farmland and could live with some of the other inconveniences of it, I mean, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But, I don't know where I stand on this anyway, but another big part of it is, any farmland, I've been the liaison of farmland a few times now, and any time I've said-
Oh, they hate trees.
You, not necessarily trees, but you know, you should probably put, do a better buffer around those streams, or do something like that, because a lot of our stormwater comes off of unwri- farmland doesn't have stormwater regulations-
Right.
Right? And a lot of our stormwater just flows right off of it. That's just the nature of what it is, right? And, you know, we may, you know, maybe you should put different buffers on, and the argument every single time is, every tree you plant, every buffer you plant, is a square foot that we can't lease to a farmer to produce some-
Right.
Not that they get a lot of money for it, but that's always the argument back. That, not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's the argument. So if you lose 10, 20-foot buffer, if they lose a 10, 20-foot buffer over some extended length, then that, to them, they're doing math that has dollars and cents tied to it relative to what you can, can and can't plant there.
Another concern that farmers have, I know, is the, when they're spraying chemicals, whether it be fertilizer or whatever, it's good to have a robust buffer to catch some of that, so it doesn't, because they don't want to get complaints from homeowners that say, you know, something blew on my lawn, or my favorite bush, or whatever, and killed it. So that's another reason why you want a pretty robust buffer.
So if the buffer exists to protect the homeowner from our farming activity, because it's our farm, right, that farmland preservation farms on our behalf?
Technically, it's Farmland Preservation, Inc. is a separate entity altogether.
Right.
They take farmland that's been preserved by the township, they take ownership of it.
Okay.
And they technically own it, even, a lot of folks think it's township-owned per se. It is Township Farmland Preservation, but the Farmland Preservation, Inc. runs everything.
So if the purpose of the plantings is to protect residents of the township from the side effects and impacts of farming activity, I'm not comfortable with the farmland preservation not being required to maintain the buffer, and they can't maintain a buffer that's not on land that they own and control. That's my position on it, I don't-
I just have a question. Dan, are there certain plantings that make better buffers than others?
Oh geez. Yes. You know, it's location-specific sometimes to make sure, you know, you, Pennsylvania doesn't have the most diverse, you know, trees cover more area, you know, taller, and you can cover, especially with spray, you know, stuff that gets aerial, trees will block it. And of course, you know, most of this is going on in the spring, so you want something that's covered during the spring, and you want layers. You'd like different layers, so trees and shrubs, so you get different heights and layers, so nothing gets in through. And I think that's what generally our buffer requirements look to do, whether it's, next, the buffers in our residential developments, or subdivisions, that, you know, those landscape buffer requirements, as well as our farmland buffer requirements. So it's a good point, it's a good question, a good point you're making. I think we could look, Jim, at the mix that is required in the buffers, to make sure we have different cover types, so that we can address that. But generally, I think the buffer requirements do have, does include layering, and it's pretty thick, so that's good too, because distance matters, you know, as in blow stuff, you know?
I just know from personal experience, I kind of shudder when people, there's a farm, you know, there's 100 acres of farmland, and the plows are going through, and the sprayers are going through, and people are putting their kids', you know, playground right on the edge of it, and there's nothing, you know, and it's crazy. I mean, I know the township has tried over the years, they've sent out letters about buffers to homeowners, but I don't think the message gets through all the time. There's also, I don't know if farmland preservation is running into this too much, but I know we used to have, I think my husband collected hundreds of golf balls, just hundreds of golf balls, you know, filling huge baskets, that people would just-
Not surprised. That doesn't surprise me at all.
It doesn't surprise, no.
Yeah.
And worse than golf balls.
My father spent decades collecting golf balls that he found in different areas, and that's something I've noticed.
But buffers is something that I'm very concerned about, just having, you know, lived on a farm all those years. And some people are very good about it. Some people, one of the homes behind us built, planted like a bunch of evergreens, which were fantastic. Not only did, I don't know if they were native, I think they were, but I don't know, but not only did they keep any, you know, anything airborne from going, but they also absorbed a ton of water, you know? So, anyway.
To your point though, and I know everyone's concerned about the buffers, as you should be, farmland, I probably spend, just having, again, being the liaison, talking to those folks, they probably spend more time on communication on buffer issues.
Yeah.
They do send their annual letters, they do talk to landowners all the time. They're very proactive about all of that.
That's good, yeah.
I know that for, like, just seeing the letters go out, they usually put it on a farmland slash township letterhead almost, and we see it, make sure they have all the proper folks listed, you know, the proper owners and all that, and they are very proactive. That's probably the number one question they get, as part of Farmland Preservation, Inc., is what people kind of can't do in the buffers, et cetera. So it's definitely an active conversation because of all the concerns that you've mentioned and others.
What do the farmers now plant when they are planting buffer? What do they plant? Like, in other words, they don't want to have to do that anymore, but what are they currently doing?
It's mostly trees, specifically, in that 25, 35 feet, it's mostly trees. And then, as you get closer to the buffer's edge, you know, they're trying to get less shade, as you can kind of see that coming down there. So that, as you get closer to the edge, they try and do a little, a few more shrubs, so that they, again, they're trying to maximize their crop land, as you can imagine. So as you get closer to the buffer's edge, things tend to get a little shorter, and then they transition into, pretty quickly into the crops.
Yeah, and a lot of it depends on where you are, because it's site-specific.
Yeah.
Your southern exposure, or the east from the west, what's going to shade out crops? And this kind of pushes the buffer more, a little further away from farmland, which makes more of the farmland usable. And they'll still have the 25-foot from the property line to crops, but then that tree that was into their 25 feet is just going to be on the homeowner's side now.
Yeah.
Yeah, listen, I love the work that they do. I mean, the farms are beautiful. As you drive around the township, they do a great job maintaining and running these things. I'm just not comfortable with shifting the responsibility for maintaining the buffer from farmland preservation onto the residents, and moving a line 10 feet into the resident's yard that limits what they can do with their property.
And you go from dealing with basically one property owner and farmland to potentially thousands or hundreds even?
Well, in some ways, it could be almost seen as a backdoor seizure of land, right? We're saying, you have to maintain this 10 feet with buffer plantings, right? I just don't think it's appropriate for us to be taking. There's only three of us here today, so I think if we were to call a motion, it probably wouldn't go in favor of putting the text forward. Tony, do you have any thoughts?
I agree with you, you know, it could be seen as a back-
Does your mic off, Tony?
Oh, it could be seen as a backdoor taking of property. And that's kind of problematic. I understand the reason why you'd want to do it, to maximize farming space, et cetera, but I'm not comfortable with the idea either. Probably wouldn't, and would not recommend approving that piece of it. I did have one other question.
Sorry, Dan, you had a question?
I'm just, to your point, like, enforcement to me would be difficult, if not-
Pretty much impossible.
Yeah. All right, I just-
We're just going to show up in someone's yard with some trees and shovels?
Well, we are getting new aerial photography soon for something else, but-
The other issue- Well, it would be for the subdivisions, not for, we're coming out of someone's lot that's already existing. It would be for, and literally, we have one piece of property that is suitable for that. We have one farm left, or maybe two, that would, that this could apply to.
That is the case today, but it would also apply to any subdivision. There are some large properties that could be subdivided to have two or three homes that border farms, right? And this would be applicable to them as well.
It would be for a farmland preservation subdivision, so an actual farmland buffer. If you were doing a farmland subdivision, like the Farm View Developments, Heather Ridge, I forget what else is a farmland subdivision, but it would only be if you did that, if you preserved half the land as farmland, clustered everything down on the rest of it.
Are we certain of that? That this is not triggered by any subdivision of land bordering preserved farmland?
Positive.
Maureen? Not that I don't love you, Jim, but the attorney's at the couple feet to my left.
Give me one second.
Sure. And honestly, and even in that case, I still don't like it. I still don't like putting the maintenance of the buffer on even those homeowners. Whether or not this impacts existing homeowners or not, just the simple shift of responsibility of maintaining what appears to me to be a quality of life and safety buffer from farm activity onto residents, if one resident decides to take down that buffer, it's not just a path for wind to go into their yard, it's the neighboring yards as well. It seems like a bad idea in general, and I'm, you know, again, I love farmland preservation, I love what they do, it just seems like a bad move.
But often, when we're doing this, particularly with the newer subdivisions, this is built into, it's on the plans, and it's built into the HOA documents as well.
Right.
So that is a, it is an enforcement mechanism that is almost twofold. It can be through the HOA itself, and it can be through us enforcing it through the HOA. So that is one way to look at it.
I get that it would be in the HOA covenants, but the HOA covenants still don't prevent a homeowner from taking a chainsaw into the backyard, right? And the HOA would have to sue the homeowner to enforce the covenants, and there are stories of HOAs being in lawsuits for years, trying to get even smaller stuff done than to forcibly plant some trees.
Absolutely. And HOA is only, I mean, the mechanism to be enforced is only as good as the HOA behind it, who's willing to enforce it.
I'm not going to move to a yes on this change tonight. It's just, yeah, I'm not going to get to a yes on it.
Well, why don't we just table it, and then when we have a full board, we can look at it again.
Sure. If that's, if the Board of Supervisors wants to send it back to us when there's a full five-person body here, we'd be happy to do it.
Ezra, you have a quorum? I tend to, personally, I agree with you, right? So if there's a unanimous three and it passes, then you probably won't change your mind the next time around, I don't know. It's perfectly fine for you guys to consider it tonight, if you want to.
What are the other changes here? Right? Aside from the buffer, we're talking about some other changes. We're talking about tree caliper changes, and I think that, I think generally, we all seem comfortable with that. I mean, especially, I want to hold the developer to a different standard than we hold ourselves to, as a best practice. So that certainly seems sensible. Those were the only two changes?
One other change is just the references at the end. They have new titles and dates for standards for tree care and tree planting. So that has been updated. That's in Exhibit A, I believe, at the very end, the applicable standards. So we have the ANSI A300 tree care standards from 2023, and we do say as amended, but I just updated it because it's a different name than it was before. And the American Standard for Nursery Stock is Z60.2, it used to be 60.1. And that was, the latest date of that is 2025.
Okay, and the, oh, gosh, that got very loud. The, I normally don't need help being loud. The format of this that we're looking at today is different from the other amendment that we discussed earlier? So this is a wholly new ordinance? Or we are amending an ordinance, and we're just not seeing that motion to amend format? Could you clarify that for me?
What we're doing is, since Section 178-81 and 178-82, the changes are, every fourth sentence throughout, rather than saying, change this sentence, and this sentence, and this sentence, and this sentence, 30 times, we just said, here's the entire section we're repealing and replacing in its entirety. So that what you're reading for 178-81 will be what the ordinance looks like. If you compare it to the current one, it looks essentially the same with those minor changes that we had mentioned.
Got it.
So, you, sorry. You could recommend approval of the ordinance as is, save for the buffer issues, if that's what y'all want to do. Then you probably have other options, but-
That is certainly an option. If you're all thinking that you don't want to change the farmland thing, you can just say-
For the caliper? Just vote on the caliper?
Yeah, just vote on everything, just say, approve as submitted-
Except for the buffer, yeah.
...with the exception of, and then cite the ordinance section to remain as is. And that would be 178-82-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm-
D.
Trying to get back to the document itself, because going through the email thread with the documents is a little bit-
I have a copy of it, if you want.
That'd be great, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. It's just a little hard, because I have an email with a Bucks County Planning Commission document, and then I have an email with-
Yeah, well, that's a Planning Commission document from four years ago.
So I'm trying to go across a thread of a bunch of different emails to find the PDF. Okay, thanks, Dan.
Jim, is there a Planning Board SharePoint Site or meeting, similar to what we have for the Board of Supervisors to-
We've used it in some of the meetings.
Yeah, we've used that quite often. And actually, I thought about, this morning, I said I'm going to email it, and I'll upload it to that, and then I didn't do it.
It is very helpful to just have one place to go, especially, because I know, like, we have these emails that arrive a few minutes before sometimes, but like, literally, I spent the last five minutes trying to, I had to click out of that to get to a different document, now I can't find the-
Yeah, we do it for the zoning hearing board, so we can try and just do it going forward.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, we've been trying to do that, but just, I didn't execute it this time.
I know if you use webmail, it gets lost in space sometimes.
And while you're looking through that, just to go back to Tony's point about advertising our tree program, we've done a couple of posts on Facebook about that. I think we could do a better job, especially when we took down all the trees, if we had told people in advance that we're taking them down, and the plan is to plant them in the future. We did that post the day we took them down, so it would have been nice to put that out the day before we took them down.
Yeah.
It may have just alleviated-
Or a week or two before, and just-
So, a dozen phone calls and five people stopping in.
Question for you, obviously, we don't have a, we don't have a tree, shade tree commission, but if somebody approves the plan, or comes up with a plan, and then approves the plan, I'm assuming the supervisors approve the plan, maybe not?
Yeah, so, no, I can tell you, we just did it.
Or is this something that EAC develops, and then comes to the supervisors with, what's, how's it operate?
So when it comes to a tree plan using-
Tree bank funds.
Tree bank funds, specifically, right? What we've previously, it was probably a hodgepodge of different things, historically. What we've been doing to try and make it a little more efficient and a little more focused, is we work with both the EAC and a consultant to develop a formal tree planting plan for the spring, and then for the fall. As part of that, there's a tree plan. So when we look at a plan, there's drawings that go with it, and then we have a plant list. So then we have, that plant list will specify what types of plants, and what type sizes, et cetera, and where they should go. And that is what we did at our last meeting. that is what we did at our last meeting. One, we first approved the plan overall, just the concept, and then after that, we, and that's approved, the EAC reviews it, recommends approval, after working with the landscape architect, usually that we have hired to do, to put together the plan. Then it goes before the Board of Supervisors to approve the plan, and we also approve the advertisement of an RFP, of a bid advertisement. And then the bids come back to us, and we have to approve that separately.
Thank you for that. I guess, I assume it's the same for removal of trees as well?
It depends. Well, so when it comes, it's a rare thing that we've removed trees, to be--
But we've just had this one instance, so--
Right, but it's--
Going forward, if it was going to happen again, just say, at Macklesfield Park, there were trees that were going to be removed, how would you go about that?
Same thing, the same thing we did with the trees that were removed this time. We had a discussion, it was, the issue was identified at the board level. It may have come out of the EAC as well, but the issue had come up, actually, the conversation started as part of the last round, when we start, when we talked about the native tree stuff a few years back, and there was pretty energetic conversation at the Board of Supervisors meeting, surrounding the native plant ordinance, where the EAC was there, Planning Commission was involved in all of those, and there were several meetings about it. As part of those conversations, things like the calorie pairs were identified as something that should not be included on a plant list and should be removed at some point. So when it comes, that's how the conversation started, when it came to actually executing. That was those, that was discussed at a couple Board of Supervisors meetings in the late winter, early spring, where, and then in this case, we were saying, okay, let's talk to a contractor to do it. Essentially, our Public Works Department realized that they could execute it, and they did. We approved them executing it, which I think they just did it sooner than we expected.
No, I'm not talking about those, I'm just, just in general.
No, but that's how the process would be. So if trees are identified for removal, whoever identifies them as needing, say, Park and Rec is looking at Macklesfield and say, ooh, we've had, you know, concerns about all these trees coming down, or they don't look good, or whatever, from whoever's been at, and they go before the Park and Rec Board, Park and Rec Board would identify it, Board of Supervisors would, I would almost guarantee that we'd send it to the EAC to review, and get their recommendation as well. They would probably propose a plan for removal and likely replacement, because just knowing the EAC, they're going to look to replace somewhere. That would then come before the Board of Supervisors, and then we would say, okay, explain it to us, and we'd make a call as to whether or not we want to do that, or some variation of that. We might send it back to the EAC with some comments or questions. And then, finally, from there, we would look to see, do we need a contractor to do it? You know, would we call a tree service to do it? You know, we might throw other trees that the township owns, because we've had to take down trees, for example, on township land, just in township open space, because they were coming down, right? We've done that recently in certain areas. Sometimes that's a tree service, sometimes public work, most times it's a tree service, sometimes it's public works.
Yep.
But it's always, unless there's an imminent danger, you know, threat to health and safety, the board would approve it ahead of time, and then they go do it. If it's a threat to health and safety, they're going to go do it.
It sounds like it would be a great idea. I think you had mentioned reusable signs, just to have some signs made up that say, there's some replanting in this area, go to lmt.org/trees, and then, you know, Public Works can just put a blog post there, hey, we're doing some replanting by the library, you know, trees will be up in the--
Yeah, I mean, spending a few bucks on a couple of signs is probably not a big deal, that we can maintain, keep the signs, reuse them.
Let me, let me throw a motion forward on the SADO Chapter 178, Article 11, Landscape and Open Land Requirements, and we'll just see what the tenor of the other two members of the commission are tonight. So I'd like to move that we recommend acceptance of the ordinance to amend provisions of SADO Chapter 178, Article 11, Landscape and Open Land Requirements, as presented tonight to the Planning Commission, except that we reject the proposed changes to, we reject the proposed Exhibit B, specifically, but not limited to, the requirement under Part D1, the buffer width shall be 35 feet in which a 10-foot-wide planted area is required on the residential side of the property line.
I think your motion maybe should be restated, not to say to eliminate Exhibit B, but to eliminate the proposed change to 178-82D.
Sorry, the text of the ordinance says that everything is stricken and replaced with the text of Exhibit B. So we're not amending that, we're replacing everything.
But if we just say, but that part will remain. The way you phrased it, to me, sounds like you're not doing B.
Oh, I don't know what else is in B. I just know that there's one part of it that I'm really against.
You said eliminate the one, but not limited to, which sounds like you want, I thought it was completely confusing. Sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. So hold on, I will draw my motion.
As you do, is there anything else in Exhibit B that you are uncomfortable with?
Or objecting, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there is. I'd be comfortable limiting it in scope to the changes to the Type 3 buffer. I mean, striking D1 would also then impact D3, because the reference is the 10-foot on the residential side.
And that's why I kind of suggested--
And then the reference is a remaining 25 feet, so four would be, yeah, would need to be rewritten as well.
And that's why I suggested just 178D to remain as is currently in the current ordinance.
The current ordinance contains a 178D, and it contains similar text?
Yes, except it's a 25-foot buffer, all on the farmland side of the property.
Okay.
So that gets back to striking Exhibit B from the amendment.
Well, that means you'd strike everything in there.
Okay, so would you just, just D?
Just--
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to get into striking D1 and D3, I mean, or like, except for the change to D, I know you're saying that 178D exists, and it has, like, I don't have 178D of the original in front of me, and if we want to look at that, we can. I think it's just easier to strike the recommended changes to 178D in Exhibit, or Exhibit B-D, Section D, is that the correct language to use here? 178-82, Section D?
Type 3 buffer.
Yes.
You might want to add that, just to clarify.
Type 3 buffer, okay. So I will move that we recommend approval of the ordinance to amend provisions of SADO Chapter 178, Article 11, Landscape and Open Land Requirements, as presented to the Planning Commission tonight, with the exception of the changes to 178-82, Section D, the Type 3 buffer, which shall not be recommended for approval. Perfect. That is my motion.
Yep.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Great. Do we have any public comment on?
No public comment.
It's hard to believe. Everyone loves the Planning Commission. I know that we are the most watched commission in Lower Mayfield Township. Is there any further comment from the commission, from any of the staff or advisors here today? Okay, hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion as stated and seconded indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let the record show, it is unanimous. The motion passes. I have nothing else on the agenda tonight.
May I?
Of course. Supervisor Grenier?
So at our last Board of Supervisor meeting, this is going to eventually involve all of you, I'll drag you in kicking and screaming for ideas. The board announced that we will be initiating a sort of master planning process to address potential future development in the corridor that extends from a bypass along Stony Hill Road through Edgewood Village and into those shopping centers. We're doing this because, as I think this board, above and beyond all others, probably realizes that there has been, and will continue to be, a lot of development pressure and redevelopment pressure in that corridor. And historically, our zoning has, you know, we've been slow to update zoning and other things, such that sometimes by the time development plans get to us, our hands are tied in certain things that we can and can't do, or can or cannot recommend or approve, or disapprove, I should say. So we're trying to be proactive about that, so that we can put in place a vision that the township sees for its own future versus some random developer or two. So with that being said, we have not fully developed a process or plan yet to move forward. I believe that we will be getting some inputs from some outside consultants to start a process and organize a process, structure one. But it will have a lot of, the plan anyway, is to have a, over the course of the next several months, to a year or so, will be to get lots of community involvement through formal meetings, presentations, workshops, et cetera, so that we can come up with a plan that represents what the township and our residents want for the future. And that will include business owners and developers as well, to get their input, because they are an important piece of this. But that'll be on future Planning Commission agenda, so I look forward to your input on that as well. That's it.
Is the corridor going to include Township Line Road, some of the land along there?
I would, probably. Again, this is something that I just put in front of the board recently to just start to brainstorm ideas and get people thinking about it. So that's, we haven't formally established a corridor study area or anything like that just yet, but I could see that being part of it, so.
And do we know the, I haven't heard anything about it recently, but the development in Middletown Township?
So that's, so, great question. So, and you can correct me if I misspeak, because I think you're, you are aware of this. So they were, the Middletown development was, they were approved for an overlay, conditioned upon Lower Mayfield approving our portion of it. So by that, I mean, the development that was proposed in Middletown, its only means of ingress and egress is through Shady Brook's main entrance. So they were to build, they are, they would like to build a private road, that the first several hundred feet of it is only in Lower Mayfield. So there's no ingress or egress from Middletown Township into their development. So that would be potentially subject to your recommendation for approval, as well as the Board of Supervisors. I can tell you that the board has written to Middletown Township and expressed our concern with what's been approved, and how it was, you know, how it was designed. I think we have many reservations about it. But because it's conditioned upon our approval for that access road, I don't know that when, we don't have a plan for it to be on our agenda anytime soon. They haven't approached us, they haven't, to be on your agenda either. So I think that's my update. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, surprised.
Okay.
I just have one comment, real quick. The next meeting is October 7th, which is a Tuesday, in light of the Christopher Columbus holiday on the 13th. So we just had to change the date, just a heads up.
Sorry, it's the, what's the date?
October 7th.
That is a Tuesday.
A Tuesday.
First Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
And then Katie from our office sent out an updated calendar link for your convenience.
Okay. Dan, I just want to thank you for kind of starting that process on the look over planning. I think one of the things that we encountered in the back and forth with Torbert was a very dated plan that the town had that said, hey, there should be a road here. I think we spent a lot of time trying to adhere to that plan, which there wasn't a modern equivalent for. So, you know, having something more modern to rely on to kind of guide what Planning Commission does, and how they look at the matter for redevelopment in that area would be fantastic.
Yeah, similar to, not quite the same thing, but, you know, we've, especially since our new township manager came on board, we've been looking to update our zoning as well, generally.
Yep.
So we, you know, with some of the open space zoning we did, trying to plan for, you know, how we would like, it's not going to be tract housing kind of stuff. That's what, we don't want that at all, nobody wants that. That's why we did the new stormwater ordinance, trying to modernize everything. So we're going through, you know, we are largely built out, but there are some definite opportunities for development in town, and we know it's likely going to happen, and redevelopment at some point in certain areas. So we just, we want to be very proactive about it, so we get what the township would like to see, and our residents can benefit our residents the most.
I just want to also say that I think it's a great idea you're doing this as well, kicking, jumpstarting this. I would just urge that it, the process gets sped up as quickly as possible.
I agree wholeheartedly.
You know, there's, not only is that development in Middletown going on, but there are other things that could take place, and you might as well try and be in front of them. And to the extent there's any need or desire to coordinate with Newtown Township, I think it should be done before more development happens on 3/32.
Hundred percent agree. And to your point, we mentioned Middletown. I don't know if you realize that Holy Family is planning on building close to 300 garden apartments for, on their property as well, that back up to Lower Mayfield. So there's lots of, it's dorms, right? So there's lots of stuff going on right on our border that we're finding out about, that we need to hopefully coordinate with our neighbors as well, so we have a--
We should reassess buffer requirements for 19-year-olds. We definitely need buffers from 19-year-olds.
We already voted, though.
Well, listen, I think we're in a good spot, so I'm just going to go ahead, I don't want to kill the conversation, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Wait, public comment? Nope, we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.